All right, good evening, everybody. It's five o'clock. Let's go ahead and start our regular meeting for October of the Fayetteville Board of Education. Thank you all for being here. We've got a banner approved today. Thank you so much for being here. Board members in front of you, you've got an agenda proposed, so I'd like to ask first that we either approve this, or if you have items to add to the agenda, we do so now. Nothing heard?
Will be approved.
Okay. Have a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
You want to oppose? Correct. All right. If every one of you please stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I should also note that through modern technology and state law that allows us, we have one board member participating electronically tonight, and so we want to welcome Pam Bryson to the screen and to the board meeting. Glad to have you with us tonight electronically to participate. Uh, let's see. Board members, you had emailed out to you the minutes from the September 6th board meeting? Any changes or corrections to be made to those?
Can I motion to approve?
Thank you. Got a motion to approve in minutes?
Thank you.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no? Okay. And we also have dispersments that were emailed out today. A variety of attachments to your emails. If you wanted to take a look at those. Williams is here. The answer. Although frankly, the way you've got them itemized now, the description is just glorious to be able to tell me is they know exactly what that expense was for. That's really, that's really correct.
Would that be approved?
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any questions before we take action? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no? Correct. Thank you. Principals report. Just right now. Always start with asking.
Good evening. It is great to be here with wonderful fall break, and I'm excited about what's going on at Ralph Faskins. This week is going to be a lot for us, a lot of good things. On the 13th, we are having our Blue Ribbon pep rally, so we invite all of you out. The only way you can get in the door is to have blue on, because we're a Blue Ribbon school, so you have to wear blue. So make note, make note. You have to wear blue.
That's a great idea.
Yes. And the pep rally will be at one o'clock in the gym, and so we invite all of you to come. And on the 14th, we've made this a family affair, so we have little Mr. Ivy here and Big Ivy. This is the brawn and this is the brains, so you know. But Officer Ivy began the Distinguished Tigers Club, and so, no offense, we will, we will get it together, ladies, but all the men in the community, we invite you out to greet our students on Friday morning, meet Officer Drew at 7:00 a.m., to just say good morning to our little Tigers, let them know that they're loved, that we're vested in them, and that they can do anything and everything. So, women, we will outdo them next month. I've already got a plan, Drew. Okay. So, and the third celebration is that I wore my heels all day, no crops, because I was challenged by a kindergartner that said, Ms. Whiteneck, I wore my heels all day. And when your toe starts hurting, you just push through. So, celebration there. But I want to introduce to you Hayden Ivy, and he will take it from here.
Good evening. My name is Hayden Ivy, and I am in the fifth grade at Ralph Faskins. We have been very busy in the fifth grade, learning a lot of new things. In math, we are learning decimals. In social studies, we are learning about the progressive era. And in E.L.A., we have been writing narratives. We have a few exciting things happening at Ralph Faskins in October. I am looking forward to our Lighthouse Pep Rally, which will be October 13th. We will also be kicking off our Distinguished Tiger Club on October 14th at 7:00 a.m. I love how at Ralph Faskins, we have such amazing teachers and principals who help us be our best. Ms. Whiteneck, I think we have one more thing to say.
Hmm. We have one more thing to say, Hayden? What is that? Go Tigers!
And of course, you have a guest, but who's your guest with you tonight?
Him.
Him. Him in the blue.
Good job. I will have to say, one of my favorite things, first time I met your dad, I was in Subway, and he's, we'd already been making plans on some things about the fifth grade, and he came up to me and said, you haven't thought about moving the fifth grade, just letting them stay at Faskins? And I'm thinking the whole time, oh, I think we're looking at that. I know we'd already kind of made the decision, but I'll never forget that.
Right. Well, write your report.
Thank you.
Well done. Okay. Ms. Dean, Fayetteville Middle School.
I'm gonna let Cheyenne tell you a little bit about herself, but something that we failed to add is Cheyenne is one of our seventh graders and the only seventh grader in the marching high school band. So, we failed to add that, so I wanted...
Hi, I'm Cheyenne Dunley, and I'm in seventh grade at FMS. I recently competed at the National Beta Club Convention. While attended, while attending, we competed in project proposal and collaboration connection, which we won. I also attended the junior representative interview, where I was chosen to be one of two leadership representatives. This means I will represent the state of Tennessee at Nationals this year. I will also attend other leadership summits and speak to other students about what it means to be a leadership representative. I will collaborate with fellow members, compete in a collaborative project onsite, and will serve as a representative the following year. I will, I will also help facilitate a leadership session at the following year's national convention. I am honored to receive this reward, award, and am looking forward to representing Fayetteville Middle School. This week at FMS, we will celebrate FMS earning Blue Ribbon status with a pep rally. We are excited to invite you, our students, family members, and any other members of our community who would like to join us for this celebration on Thursday, October 13th, at 2:10 in the FMS gym. We will begin our basketball season next week with our first game, Monday, October 17th, beginning at 6:00 at South Lincoln. Our first home game will be on Monday, October 21st, October 24th against Blanch. Come on out and support our Tigers. Our current enrollment at FMS is sixth grade with 80, seventh grade with 82, and eighth grade 83, with total enrollment at FMS 245.
Great job. Good job. Do you notice that the celebrations are on the same day? That that's done on purpose, so that everybody can kind of go from one straight to the next, just easier for everybody to get through that? So if you kind of noticed, you're like, oh, what's that color? Blue is still the color? Frank, come on in. Please don't change color. Did you have anybody here with you?
No.
Oh, you did. Great report. Great job.
Her mom had to take her little brother to soccer.
You did great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, written report. Fayetteville High School.
We have some representatives from our drama department that's gonna speak to you here in just a second. Couple of housekeeping things. We have a busy week as well. Homecoming for us, you know, this is a big week. We got rep aid. They're 5-0, we're 5-0. Also, game of the week, Air Lincoln, just about everybody shared the voting right now. We had some issues getting everything working at the school and on the Chromebook for the kids, but I assure you, study hall is voting every time they can get it done. So, hopefully, I think we're like 6% down right now, but I got a feeling that'll fix itself by Thursday or Friday. Also, we have ACT coming up for senior retake, so we've got our boot camp this Saturday. We've got some teachers coming in to do some test prep with those kiddos. Got about 16 signed up now. I think we had 20 or so last year. COVID hurt us a lot when we were kind of going through all that, but it's good to see those numbers getting back up. And then that senior retake will be October 19th at the school, along with ASVAB. So, we're trying to do two big ones in one shot to try to get that done. So, juniors and seniors will be testing that day. So, these ladies don't need me to introduce them. I'm sure they can handle it on their own, because Mr. Hobbs has done such a great job. So, at this point, I'm just gonna let y'all roll with it.
This might be a train wreck to start. Excuse my tires.
But everybody stops to watch, though.
Excuse my tires, paddle puff. Practice after, after this meet.
Hi, my name is Sierra Arguelo. I'm a senior at Fayetteville High School.
I'm Aleah Fowler. I'm a junior.
We are excited to have this opportunity to tell you all about our drama department and the curriculum at Fayetteville High School.
We recently went to Ralph Faskins and performed Snow White and the Seven Doors. I was the evil queen.
I was Snow White.
We, our class, since there's two different classes separated, we, we did pre-K through second grade, and then the other class did third through fifth.
Let's see. We performed for them, and the other class did, as I said, third to fifth. We have been working very hard on different acting techniques in Mr. Hobbs' class, and we really hope to visit the students at Ralph Faskins once again this year.
My vote's on my left for Sam, but you know. We want to do a night of the arts. It's a coffeehouse type of event, and it'll, like, students can display their art, and we'll do a couple monologues, and everybody can just show their own type of, you know, unique self.
As well as the band, most of the members of the band, such as myself, will also be performing, because it's the Night of the Arts, hence the title. It'll be a fun and relaxed experience to focus on the arts in school, which is a very important thing to focus on.
The end of February and the beginning of March, the drama department will present a combined middle school and high school production of Disney's Lion King. The auditions will be at the end of October, beginning of November, you know, just start to get in line.
Personally, I'll be auditioning. How about you, Aleah?
I don't know.
The next event for the drama department will also focus on students from Ralph Faskins.
We are excited about the upcoming production of Charlotte's Web. My name is Jillian Jones, and I'm a fourth grade grader at Ralph Faskins, and I'll be playing the part of Wilbur.
As Charlotte would say, salutations. My name is Caliona Holden, and I am also a fourth grader. I will be playing the part of Charlotte. We auditioned the week before fall break, and our first rehearsal was this afternoon. The production will be Thursday, November 10th. We will have a school performance and an evening performance for the community.
We hope you come to see us in our production of Charlotte's Web.
Great job. All right, now, do any of y'all have guests with you or anything like that?
Well, he, he usually comes, but my dad's...
I don't know what he's been telling, Jillian, I know what he's been telling you, but he's not been here that time.
Bill.
All right. And there's the kids.
Mom. Her mom.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Great report. Good job, all of y'all. We would be remiss if we didn't point out Mr. Hobbs in the background. Not that everybody in our community doesn't know him already, but taking this home for the whole system-wide drama program is, we really, really appreciate all of the doing. It's obviously something that kids are loving, so thank you. Appreciate that. I'm gonna say that, I won't say any names, but Mr. Jones and I were talking today, we were talking about people who enjoyed it, and he said that they were actually talking at the bus garage. It had gotten back how good the play was the other day at Ralph Faskins. They were, people were talking about it at the bus garage. The arts are permeating... It is. I'm just saying, you know, you might not think that that's what happened, but that's, that's how good it was, and that is, just so proud of all of y'all.
Thank you.
I do have one quick question. You mentioned the Night of the Arts. Fantastic idea. Do you have a date set?
We are, the 28th? 28th?
Um...
October.
October, okay.
So, about, about over a week.
And that'll be at the high school, yes, conference, okay. Fantastic. We'll get that...
All are welcome.
Any other questions, board members? Pam, anything? You good? Okay. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. From our supervisor, Mr. Jones. Jillian, if you'd like to stand and evaluate his report.
That's right.
She is my, she is my staunchest critic on it, and probably on the planet. We have, we have a lot of fun at home. Pleased to be able to present again. Good news right out of the bat, our FEMA restructuring of the grant has been approved verbally. Where the, it's, it's a done thing. It is approved. They're going into the review process right now, which is bureaucratic process. It is, it is what it is. It's all how it works. It was going swimmingly, and now we're a little worried because the hurricanes in Florida and Virginia and et cetera, some of the Tennessee personnel are going out and helping out with some of those things. It may or may not affect us. I just want you all to realize, like, where it seems like this is an individual project, it is affected by all these other types of things with emergency management. So, but we are very pleased that the restructure has been approved. We're looking forward to letters with specific dates and numbers and things of that nature, and I wouldn't expect that within the next month, but it will be coming, so those are, that's good news.
Kind of a quick question while we're on the topic. Is that FEMA approval verbal?
Okay, so FEMA defers to TMA in this. So, it is, so TMA is all we have to get on it. And yes, TMA, it's good. Doug is the main man, and Doug has given it stamp, and then it's gotta go through some military, and so, you know, there's a lot of layers, but it's going through all that at the moment, so, yeah. Good stuff. Also, wanted to make you all aware, some of the other projects that are going on, other developments. I want to give a shout out to Jeff Bryant. He is doing some of the best work he's ever done. He's had some really good ideas to help us. You know, we've got supply chain issues, we've got cost inflationary issues, things that we're running into barriers, and he's coming up with these great solutions, working hard to get some stuff in that will help us on HVAC, will help us on potentially finding places for our, some of our classrooms in the portables, and making that more of a comfortable situation, potentially permanent placement for those in the, within the school year. So, doing a lot of good work on that end, and it is unending. That's a, you know, you could have a team of people doing some of this, and he's taken most of that on his shoulders and running with it, so I'm very pleased with that. I'd say whether his father was in the room or not, but that's, this is, this is good stuff.
He walking through what he's doing in the end of the building there for cause of...
Pretty impressive.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah, it's great.
They're gonna have, and to be able to get out of horrible and into the...
Well, and, and at the price point...
Isn't that happening, present that's happening now?
It's, it's in process, yeah. And so, rather than make a construction project, we're just going to repurpose some of the stuff we've got and kind of reimagine that, so that we don't have to change anything for fire code purposes and code. Everything stays kind of as it is, but we open up space and make it available. And then our guys, he, Richard, and Knox are doing the legwork with, like, just very minor expenses with any kind of contractor involvement.
It, Mr. Jones told me, he says that Mr. Bryant had something he wanted to talk to me about, and said he thought it was unbelievable, when Jeff came and talked to me about it, it was, I was blown away. You know, sometimes we can't see things because we look at it right here, and he was able to see the whole picture and do all that, and it was...
That's because he's familiar, he's, nobody else is as familiar with the structures, and so he could see, hey, we did this back, you know, 24 years ago. That led to this. If we undo this, and then just put some new stuff that we're capable of doing, we can save vast amounts of money and get some of what we need. So, it's, you know, not enough good things can be said about great ideas and hard work like that, so we're, I'm pleased with that. Bus is going pretty good. We're getting lots of kids on the buses, so probably more kids riding the bus as a percentage of the school community than ever before, so I think we're good. We'll see when some of the extracurriculars get finished up, if some of the buses are kind of overfull, but I've, actually, in our staff meeting, I was like, some of the older ones, if y'all can encourage the ones that can get rides, and help us out with the little ones, because we want to make sure everybody's got, got a way, but we're, about three of the buses are at complete capacity right now. Of course, it may entail restructuring some routes, and of course, that stuff has to be board approved. Like, we can do little stuff within day-to-day, but if I have to change a route, then that's per policy, I'd have to bring that to the board. That may be a possibility. We'll have to see once all the football is over and the basketball starts, as well as marching bands, some things like that, because you don't realize it, but all those affect transportation.
Right.
And that's the bulk of my report today. Does anyone have a question that I can try to answer for you? All right. Thank you all so much.
Fantastic. That's great news. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
So, to piggyback off of something that Mr. Jones referred to, we've got our amendments in for our S.R. 2.0, as well as our 3.0. I love it when I can call Lisa at the beach, and she will hit the submit button for me on fall break. But, you know, we were able to, the state refers to it as braiding funds, so because we knew that deadline of June was gonna be looming, and we were gonna have, because of the, all of those problems referenced with supply chain, construction, et cetera, you know, now we're gonna be able to do some things with units, you know, HVAC units that we've needed for a long time. I cannot anticipate, knock on wood, that they would not approve those changes.
Ask a quick question about that. We're probably not the only school system in the state facing similar...
Absolutely not. As a, as a matter of fact, when Lisa and I went to a conference, we actually sat down with Mary Ann Dersky, and we cornered her specifically for that, and that was her exact comment, that that was a rampant problem all across the state, and I think that's the reason they invented the term braiding of funds, because then it would be necessary. So, conversation today, Motlow is about to set up a dual enrollment EMT program, which we're gonna be able to piggyback our nursing program with, potentially sending seniors there in the morning next year, and they'll get four episodes for that, so we like that. Still in talks with Frankie about the welding program, which they're very on board with. We're gonna try to braid some funds again with the innovative school model. Super excited. Today, we have a student that I told you about. Today was her first day, Frankie. I took her and dropped her off. We got a bus that's gonna pick her up. I think tomorrow's dress-up day, and she came out, and she had her welding gloves. She said it was like Christmas for welders. She had a welding helmet and her gloves, and she said, you know, tomorrow, like, they're wearing costumes. You think? I said, I would wear my welding helmet on my head and carry my gloves in my pocket. So, she is super excited, and that's gonna be a great deal, and that's what opens the door to collaboratives with industry like that. Also in a conversation today with a collaborative grant with T-HAG that's going to be about dual enrollment. So, they were impressed with the stuff we had done previously, T-CAT, Franklin County and Moore County, so now they're approaching us. So, they approached us and wanted to do a call about some money they had to collaborate. And ISM, hoping by the end of the week to get the innovative schools model, which is that 1.5 over four years. You know, we're gonna focus on computer science. We're required to have required computer science by 2025 anyway, so the idea is if we can use this funding to get a computer science, like, lane in the middle school and in the high school, and again, we're doing some creative things and getting people certified, and this money we will use for that. So, by the time the 2025 drops, we'll already have it taken care of. So, that's kind of our goal, which will then lead to in talks of evolving to a cybersecurity, that would be a dual enrollment or a triple enrollment, Motlow, T-CAT, where it would be housed in their building for seniors to go the cybersecurity route. So, that's what we got going on.
And from an industry perspective, it is so hard to hire cybersecurity-trained and certified individuals. It is, they are so hard to find, and so, these folks will walk into a job market that is begging them.
Mr. Jones went with us when we went in. What was the high school that we visited in high school? When we went there, there were actually seniors who were 18 years old, who would be graduating, who already had all the certifications.
They were getting, they were certified, and they were at the stage that they could at their age, going through companies that already had hunted them to provide the steps toward obtaining military's clearances.
Yeah.
And while in high school, I was very impressed with that.
They, you know, the creative, they have the cyber school that's right there near, what's that college?
Oakwood, no.
Yes, yes, it is. It's right near Oakwood, and...
Our goal is, we just gotta make an instructor. That's the deal.
And keep one.
And keep one.
So, it's pretty lucrative.
Can I, can you, is there opportunity for that cybersecurity to be cyber? You'd have to have an in-person, or you just actually...
They actually have a dual enrollment course at UT Southern, but here becomes the problem. There aren't slots for our kids because they're filled up with other people. So, that's, the people are...
Where do we possibly have a virtual...
Yes, yes.
With that, so if that's the case...
I think we could find a person.
Yes.
They don't necessarily have to be physically in the school.
We had a...
You can just find someone.
That's a great idea, if you find somebody that's doing that, and they don't have a full capacity, and we can give you back with a far smaller capacity, and there's, that would be ideal.
And we actually talked about that with someone who had a full-time job, but were working from home, and because you could do it like a flipped classroom, that conversation was actually had about a dual enrollment at the T-CAT. It's just a matter of making it happen and putting the stuff in place.
But we can have a virtual teacher.
We could act, technically, you can have a virtual teacher in anything.
Well, I, I trust with your vision for all of this, we will find a way to make that happen, because that is, that will be a stellar program to have in our school.
I do want to, I, that you're, that is no offense to anybody, but I always look forward to your presentation, because I think what you're doing is always, I don't know, just so impactful. Everybody says, but I think the, the career tech stuff is so just...
Mr. Jones and us...
I think that image to me, I think that's so great.
We had that conversation today about how you can just redirect one person, and then every generation after, so we're increasing the economic potential of all of our students in our school.
It is. It's just you see the real-life change that is happening for the opportunities kids are having. It's just really, it's brilliant.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Pam, anything? Trying to make sure you feel included out there in...
Nope.
Virtual land. All right. Thank you so much, Regina. Ms. Kiffin?
I love Regina too, because she's so creative and comes up with all these great ideas.
I generate a lot of work for the people that work with me.
And I've got to figure out how to make it work in the computer camp, so, so she's fantastic.
I generate a lot of work for people.
Well, what about this? And I'm like, okay, I've got to try to do that, so...
Regina's talking to Runso.
A lot of, there, I'm gonna be like Josh Hoppel quoted me this year weekend, he didn't know. Opportunity, people. This week is opportunity. You gotta embrace it that way.
I don't have a whole lot tonight. I would like to say this, though. The people at our schools and the office that do attendance have done a fantastic job this year, and we've had a change at the middle school. We've got a new person at the front desk there, Mr. Tony Allen. And at the high school, of course, Ms. Alice just left us, and Casey Sheridan's taken over there, and so I work with them a lot as far as attendance and coding, and make sure, we're trying to make sure we get everything exactly right, and the schools have done a super job with that this year, and I just want to kind of shout out to them for that. Current enrollment numbers right now, our overall enrollment's 1190. We've got 12th grades 97, 11th grades 84. Anyone write these down, Mr. Parker? 10th grade 105, 9th grade 100, 8th grade 84, 7th grade 83, 6th grade 81, 5th grade 75, 4th grade 70, 3rd grade 85, 2nd grade 95, 1st grade 86, kindergarten 73, and pre-K 72 right now, so.
Miss 11th and 12th?
11th was 84. 12th grade was 97. So, but.
How much did they spend?
105 in 10th grade. 10th grade 105. So, high schools, yeah, pretty heavy this year, exposure numbers overall, so. But anyway, things are really going well. So, y'all have any questions or anything?
You spend a lot of time at the individual school.
I do, I do.
Ironing out issues.
I do. Yeah, that's a big chunk of my time.
Every child is monetarily means something to the system. And so, when you say every child matters, every child matters.
And for example, that's why I generate work for Steve, because on the new TISA funding formula, though, a CTE student generates more money. So, we got to make sure the state, that it's tracked and goes to them.
She can find you on a boat in the middle of the Gulf of Mexico.
And on the beach. On the beach and on a boat.
Thank you.
Okay, student is not with us tonight, Dr. Stiles?
I don't have too much to cover today, but last month, at the end of the month, we had our professional development day, where all of our teachers got together in their schools, and we provided training in a lot of different areas. And one of the trainings we did was writing, so I got the opportunity to work with teachers on that. And they brought in all of the writing that we just completed on the case assessment, because with our response to intervention, we're adding writing as an area that we're going to focus on for intervening and helping students. So, I was very impressed with the teachers. All the way from 1st through 12th, we all met and looked at writing samples and talked about informative paragraphs and essays, so that was.
Most were engaged, too, weren't they?
Oh, yes, definitely.
It's one thing about putting on a press release, but no one paid attention.
Yes. And then with our Title I funds, we have, we've kind of talked about this before, we've contracted with the Bailey Group, and they came in right before the break and worked with our administration. And the big focus is on culture and climate of the schools. And so, just in what we've seen tonight, I was very impressed with what was taking place in our school. So, I think that that's going to go a long way. They've, they've been an impressive group to work with, the Bailey Group, so.
How long will that work?
They'll be here once a month, and they work with the principals in one session and the assistant principals in a second session. And so, that's paid for through our Title I funds.
It'll be a whole school year.
A whole year.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Yon?
Well, mine also will be short and sweet. I think helped everybody enjoy their time off last week. Mr. Giffen gave you the numbers for pre-K. We have about six empty spots, so we're staying pretty full in our pre-K this year, which always looks good for our kindergarten numbers for the next year, it always helps those. Our after-school program, it actually has a waiting list. We're at 68 students in our after-school, and we received our state certifications this past week. All paperwork was turned in in September, and then we received our certificates, and we had to up our numbers in both programs. So, we were at overcapacity, so we upped our number so that we are now all certified in all of our classrooms.
Have you questioned, if you have any updates about 3rd grade retention, and what, like where is the latest?
We are, as a school system, Ms. Whiteneck and Ms. Pace are tracking that with every 3rd grade student. Notes went home at parent-teacher conferences, trying to stay right on top of that. I, you know, of course, I think there's some legislation that'll come through.
But so nothing has changed as far as like the state?
No. It won't until the legislature's come back in January. Nothing will change till they come back. So, it's, it is what it is until January. And then we will need to start contacting our legislators.
Yeah, I think most all of us, we're kind of in a slight holding pattern, because we just don't know what to do, that's always the conversation. Everybody just go, what have you done, what have you done? And the directors, we don't know, and they go, okay, that's what we're scared. You're just afraid to pull the trigger on too much, because nothing's final, but.
Well, I mean, it, well, sort of final, we're trying to get it unfinal, right? We're trying to get it in reverse.
But they are, Ms. Whiteneck and Ms. Pace are tracking that daily, and they are communicating with parents constantly.
All we can do is prepare.
That's all we can do, is prepare.
It has been passed already.
And, you know, we will provide summer school again for those that need that, and of course, we will target that 3rd grade group this year, so.
So, how does that affect our, is that summer school grant separate from what?
Yes.
So, you're going to have a 3rd grade or?
We, we will receive our allocations, was it Ms. Troppens' last year, about January?
I think so.
January, February, we'll receive our allocations based on the number of students that are considered, like Regina was saying, that Mr. Giffen keeps those at-risk numbers correct in our student information system. Our allocation will be based on our number of at-risk students.
But you're essentially have two summer camps with two separate staff.
That is a very possible scenario, and that worries us a little bit, because again, when you have limited staff and you have limited students, I don't know that, we're going to try to work into one, we'll just have to see how that goes. But yes, that's a possibility based on the way it looks, and that all the small schools throughout the state are struggling from the same thing.
We do have wonderful staff that always step up for summer school, we really do. I'm very impressed with our summer school staff the last two years, and couldn't ask for better folks.
Yeah, I agree, because we worried about it last.
We did, we did, because we don't want them to get burned out. You know, that burnout of, because they don't really get any time off when they work that summer school, because they get off about the 1st of July. We start in service about the 25th, so they have about a two-week window. And y'all, that's challenging.
And of course, because of the way we restructured some things that Ralph asked us, they have those transition classes, which we hope will help with that. That's kind of our goal, was to get ahead of the game with the transition classes.
Yes, ma'am.
Normally, we wouldn't do that, and we may not do that next year, but we're going to see how this works.
I did have a quick question.
Okay.
The after-school program is built back up. My perception was we did down, was that, was, do we, in retrospect, looking back at that, was that a COVID thing that just kind of hammered that program?
The cost, the cost at first was, was more than a lot of families could afford. The grant really helped us getting the 21st century grant, so that they can come at no cost. Our number started back up, and then COVID hit. And so, we, you know, that kind of hurt us for those, for that year right after COVID. But the cost had gotten, with the FAST program, had gotten to the point that the average parent couldn't pay the fees. Or the kids that we really needed there.
That's right. And 68's getting up to kind of normal levels from the past.
Yeah, it is, it is. And it's right now with the staff we have and with the funding we have, it's about all we can, we're funded for 50. So, we are stretching our funds. Our grant was for 50 students, so we're stretching our funds as far as we could stretch them. And we have some, we also have great staff there as well.
Well, it must be great, because Anderson's asking me every day, can I go to after?
Well, that was one of the things when we start, went move from the FAST program to the 21st century program, one of the people at the state said to me, if people are begging to come, you know you're doing it right.
Yeah, why do you want?
And they're getting some tutoring, homework help, and those kind of things as well. Not, it's not just a playtime.
And then they're getting a lot of enrichment, and we have physical activity that's a requirement of our grant. They get a snack. We feed them every day. And so, yes, we have three excellent teachers that are helping with tutoring every day, homework help. We're hoping to get in the computer lab maybe after Christmas and do some things in there. But right now, we're focusing on just getting homework and tutoring done.
Yeah, that's cool. Let's say, our daughter is at LEE in middle school education, and she's working Bradley County Schools, part-time, doing exactly that with the elementary school, and she's getting, she's just loving it.
I wish we were a little closer to UT Southern, because when I, in my former position, I used a lot of college students, and they were excellent tutors. And so, I wish we had that opportunity here. We've tried with Motlow, it just, their education program is kind of down right now, and so hopefully it'll come back.
Well, thank you so much for that report. Ms. Williams?
So, the first item is the September's financial reports, the revenue section. And this is just for informational.
Kind of year-to-date comparison?
Year-to-date, the third column is the year-to-date funds received, and just kind of, it's like a month in a row, you know, actually it's October's money that we reported in September, is what it receives in September. And then the next report is the expenditure reports. And that is the year-to-date from July through into September. And that includes the PEP tier and the capital outlay.
And I would draw the board's attention that y'all, y'all obviously perfectly capable of reading this, like I am, but there are some percentage complete, how much percent of the budget, there's a column in the middle for the current school year, and then over on the far right is last school year. Or the city, back when I was on the city board, we did a similar thing to show, well, we're 23% expended on this line and 42 on this. And you might not be 42% of the way through the year yet, but there's always a reason why that, maybe those expenses come earlier in the year, not later, and so those are always interesting to follow to see.
Right, and so, like, for instance, you know, we've already paid liability insurance, and that came out of the Board of Education, so that's a big chunk of the.
God, I noticed that, that the board was costing us a lot. I noticed that, I thought, I'm going to ask you, so thank you for answering that big expenditure. We were like, 45% expended on the year, and I'm like, whoa, we just.
Well, that's right, when y'all look at my travel budget, that's, that's blue.
I need to see a workout on that.
So, it's one-time expenditures, it's already been spent.
That's just the nature of it. Those are great reports, thank you. Any questions, board members or nothing?
So, the next item is the approval of the ARP IDA preschool budget, and this is just carryover funds from the American Rescue Plan, funds that were not spent at the end of FY '22, but we have it FY '23 to spend. And the first one is the preschool, and it's $6.27. So, I'd say for your approval.
These are the reports that were in the email from Sunday, that were sent out on Sunday, if you're looking for it. And they're sideways. But you can clearly see $6.27. I think I heard a motion, but I might, okay, I thought, I heard you say. And I got a second, any discussion of that $6.27? I want to favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
And the next item is the ARP IDA port fee funds, and that's $42,265.34. And those funds do have to be expended by FY '23, June 30th, this fiscal year. And that's carryover from last fiscal year.
We have $42,000 remaining?
Yes. It was out of a $66,000 budget, and then we have 42 remaining. But we have until the end of this fiscal year suspended. It was a two-year grant.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no.
And the last one is the ARP homeless FY '23 budget, and $1,888.56. We have until FY '24 to extend. And this is carry, carryover from last fiscal year.
Is this, I'm sorry, is this something that we actually use, and is this funds that have been used before?
This is a new grant, this part of the new monies that came down.
This is a new thing?
New thing. Last year was the first year.
Got you.
Yeah. And it will end FY '23 and '24.
Okay.
Looks like the bulk of those funds are going into the regular instructional program.
Thank you, Marshall.
Okay, got a motion? And a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
Listen.
And then, just to follow up on the insurance that we had.
Health insurance, that we talked about last month.
Last month, we have virtually met with one digital, and we have received our information from the state, what she was needing, but it's not quite the detailed information that she was needing, but her team was going to look at it, and we're just waiting to hear that from her to do her studies on what we received from the state. But we did get the information from them, and it was submitted into it today.
And I spoke with the insurance company from the state, they read our toss, and they were, they asked me about, you know, when we sent the letter, they asked, you know, why did you send the letter? So, I explained to them. And so, they said that, they requested that they have an audience with the board at some point concerning all that, you know, just, I guess their rebuttal. And so, when we get to that process, I think we need to go a little further with this, because I don't even know what we would talk about at this point in time.
We need to get more done.
But I told them that I would bring that before the board at the appropriate time, so that's, that's kind of what we're waiting, and I guess we're just waiting on feedback right now, after they look at the stuff, that's my understanding.
Well, I think part of the thing was the squeaky wheel, and we're squeaking, right? Because the rate of increase is very high, and we're concerned about long-term sustainability. And so, the state knows we're upset and concerned about our future with them, we're looking at, we're pursuing another way to address this, and see if we get a better option.
That's what they were talking about, and I told them, I said, you know, we just can't go with that kind of increase on a regular basis. And they said, you know, of course, when they start saying different things, you know, like, what's the first time we've increased in so long, and blah, blah, blah. But anyway, so they know, and they were well aware, they knew exactly who Fayette City was.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, I'm good, good. I've shared this with some of the board members, just related to, and you face this with your own insurance coverage, but of course, I'm a federal employee retiree, and our, of course, they have, they have a broad portfolio of insurance, health insurance options and whatnot, and they have a lot of power to negotiate, because they are the federal government. And, and starting in FY '23, the average premium increase for health insurances under federal plans is going to be 8.7% increase, which is huge. And, and I think it's a sign of the inflationary times we're in, the health systems are done, everything's just skyrocketing in healthcare, but, but it's, it just, we've got to look and make sure our wheel is squeaking to the state. And we're not the only ones, right? I know that you say in your superintendent meetings, everybody, this is the talk of the system, right, is we can't, we can't do this indefinitely.
That is correct.
So, yeah, I appreciate the work the staff is doing, and Carl's working on this as well, appreciate, appreciate her work on this.
So, you have not heard back yet from her about the information that was sent from the state?
We got an email today, or this was today, or this morning? This morning, so, but that was not about that.
All right, anything else, financial, right on me? Okay, we have committee reports, facilities and transportation. Anything further to report on that, Mr. Jones or committee members, facilities, transportation?
Nothing else.
Okay, all right.
I have just a mention, we had, we've talked about multiple times, is that, you know, we, when you and I were on that committee, we had sort of started blinging into trying to meet monthly. Anyway, it's, we've talked about it previously, and you brought it up in your email last week. I feel like sometimes a little bit in the dark on the facilities, because just like this project going on in the back of the Cosmopolitan, I just didn't, I don't like being on the tail end of finding out what's going on. Not that that's, I don't, not because I'm dumb, I have full trust, it's just, just so I know that what's going on to be updated. So, I think maybe monthly.
They are, we discussed that, Mr. Jones, we discussed it today.
We talked to us about that in staff meetings today, so, well, I think lots of us are going to have monthly meetings now, so.
So, that would be.
Yeah.
But that would be a plan on that committee, right?
Mm-hmm, on the facilities.
So, just whatever should, you know.
Mr. Jones is going to reach out to y'all, that's what I was going to say, he's going to reach out to both of y'all, and schedule times that, you know, be convenient to both of y'all where you can. And again, some of them have to be done virtually, just like we're doing right here. But yes, I think that would be great, and, well, Parker and I also discussed that this afternoon, that it would be good, that way we can give real reports. Not, that's our board, but I'm saying, the board members can give reports.
Board members can, we, you know, more things, well, we get that.
Well, and then I think, like, we've talked, we had it, but like, working towards a real working facilities.
We're, we're real close to being there.
You know, that we can, be more streamlined, not that we don't have a streamline, but it's just more documented. That we can, that, be more streamlined, not that we don't have a streamline, but it's just, it's more documented, I guess.
Well, and we've also talked, you know, the finance committee doesn't even meet on a monthly basis, and yet we're gonna start meeting with Ms. Williams on a monthly basis, just for that same purpose, just to stay better, so that I can, Tommy and I can stay better in hold on it. Policy already wears it out, okay? Y'all meet all the time.
We've, we gotta go now.
There's no lack of meetings.
If that's the reason I chose to do this, they were complaining to let me write.
But I, I think it will be good for us to, in our respective committees, to have some more interaction, so that's, that's good. Thank y'all for the time you've invested in that. All right, uh, so finance, we do have a few things, a couple of things. These are standard, y'all seen some of these in the course of this FEMA project. But the first one is another invoice that we have from Broadens and Associates for, in fact, it's invoice number eleven. We really have been at this for a while, haven't we? Nineteen thousand, three eighty-eight and fifty-one cents for their project program management services, um, toward this FEMA project. I would make a recommendation that we make a motion that we approve that invoice. Got a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And then we also have a, um, a, uh, an invoice from J D H M Architecture. It's their eighth invoice, and this one is for six thousand dollars for their architectural services, also on the FEMA project as well. So, um, no surprises there, these will then go on to the city for their actions as well, right? So I'd make a motion that we approve this invoice. Second, all right, uh, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Uh, that's all I have on that topic, insurance and policy.
We're just minus one. Unanimously, there's not enough votes, she didn't vote, so. Yeah, right, it says for rec, record, we can make sure that we don't.
That's right, that's right, we sort of show it five and zero, we vote on that particular motion. Okay, uh, insurance and policy?
I have seven policies tonight.
Okay.
I move to approve, um, the following revised policies on second reading. One-point-seven-zero-zero, school district goals.
Okay, you got a motion? Just second reading on all of these.
Make a motion to approve one-point-seven-zero-zero, school district goals.
Okay, is that a second to her motion? Okay, excellent. Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right.
I move to approve four-point-two-zero-five enrollment in college-level courses.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
I move to approve five-point-one-zero-zero personnel goals.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no.
I move to approve one-point-four-zero-four, one-point-four-zero-four appeals and appearance before the board.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay.
I move to approve one-point-seven-zero-three, school attendance areas.
Okay, I have a motion? And a second? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. All right.
I move to approve one-point-eight-zero-zero, school calendar.
Okay, motion? And a second? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no?
I move to approve six-point-two-zero-four, attendance of non-resident students.
Okay, I have a motion? And a second? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no? Oh, uh, that passed unanimously, okay? It was quiet, I, there were no, there were no names, so, so we're good there.
One and oh.
Thank you so much. Any, any, uh, anything further from policy?
Definitely.
Insurance, all right. Uh, Mr. Hopkins?
All right, I'd like to recommend the approval of an overnight trip for FHS FFA chapter to attend the ninety-fifth Annual National FFA Convention Expo on October the twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth in Indianapolis, Indiana.
I make a motion to approve it.
All right. I've got a motion to, you're not, you're not chaperoning that trip right now. I have a motion to approve this overnight trip for our FFA chapter? And a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye, anyone opposed, say no. Great, got it.
And the second part there, I gave, I handed out a job description or a, a link there. I'd sent you something on the weekly update about creating position of Assistant Director of Schools. And I think there's never been a job description or an official thing that we can find on record, and we've looked. So I would like to recommend the approval of that job description and title.
I think it's a fantastic idea. We've had sort of some named, uh, at least verbally, we've had this in the past, um, but we, we just, we need this, in my opinion. I think we definitely need to name this and codify it so that it's actually official.
I've thought about it for a while, that's what I'm used to in previous position, but also after going to toss and speaking to the other directors, even small schools, everybody typically has some form, form like that, so I thought it'd be time for us to pull the trigger on that.
Yeah, and anytime you're out of the office, we need, or the, the director, even after your tenure, uh, is over, it, you know, we just need this, so. Well, I would make a motion that we approve this position.
Second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion of that? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Okay, so you'll take care of that. Anything else from you?
I don't think so.
Okay, you probably, board members, you probably saw in one of the emails, there was a resolution of appreciation, this is the, uh, we, we can do this through Utrust, right? And, and Utrust the ones that sends us this, this Utrust board member?
I was gonna say, you got a board member out of Utrust.
That's right, okay. So, so it is the monthly, uh, we, we really like to just, uh, take time each month and honor a different segment of our employees. And, and this month, it is custodians, um, and, and it reads as the following, I'd make a motion, we approve this motion, uh, this resolution as follows. Whereas our custodians deserve honor and recognition because they have the important job of keeping our schools safe and germ-free for all the students and staff members. Whereas our custodians start their days early, work hard during school hours, and then stay late to get everything clean and ready for the next school day. And whereas the Fayette City school system operates properly because our custodians are hardworking, dependable, and consistent. And whereas our best custodians take pride in their work and go above and beyond their duties by being friendly and encouraging to students and other staff members. Therefore, be it hereby resolved, the Fayette City School Board acknowledges and honors our custodians who constantly fight to keep our schools safe, germ-free, and clean. Be it further resolved, each school in our system is encouraged to involve students, employees, and parents in Custodian Appreciation Day using the theme of Disney Aladdin. Uh, and this, uh, if you approve, would be approved the tenth day of October, twenty-twenty-two. I think that's a great idea, I'd make a motion, we approve this. Got a second? We're not, we're not by this requiring custodians or any staff members to dress in Aladdin costumes. Just, just that's the theme of the day, right?
It is.
Okay, just clarifying that. All right, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Um, well, board members, our next board meeting regularly scheduled would be November seventh, Monday, November seventh. Is that, is that a go for everybody as far as you know? It doesn't fall on a holiday, so that's a, that's a positive sign for our scheduling. Five o'clock on November seventh is, uh, is what we have. Any final comments, board members?
I have one final comment.
Yes, ma'am.
So October is Dyslexia Awareness Month, which you all know personally, that's a special thing to me and our, and our family. So I just wanna take opportunity to say, you know, statistically, if you haven't heard me rant about this before, that statistic is one in five children. So, you know, on its spectrum type of learning difference. But I wanna say, just in my time in the board, I think we've made leaps and bounds working towards that. I'm just really, I'm very proud of how far we've progressed in the last four years working towards that as a system from what Ralph Askins is doing as far as identifying and intervention. And statewide, this is the first time, this new TISA funding formula is the first time that they're ever spelled out specific funds for students with characteristics of dyslexia, which is really a monumental thing. So I just think that's noteworthy to say, that's, so more work to be done, but it's really encouraging to see the direction that we're going in, so.
Thank you for that. Anything from a high school, from our student board member?
Yes, sir.
Okay, homecoming week's going well?
Great, yes, sir.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah, it was a parade on Friday. Yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
That's right.
Y'all are welcome.
What time, is that after night?
Two-thirty.
Either two or two-thirty. I love a good homecoming parade rally.
Do we have things for this one?
Do you know, are they having a parade or?
No, ma'am, that didn't go through, but the themes today was pajama day, tomorrow is character day, online, Wednesday's Adam Sandler day, and bring anything but a backpack day. Thursday's throwback, and Friday's spirit day. See, bring your supplies too.
Oh, that's right.
That's what big, I've seen other schools do, it's, it's the baggy clothes, it's, it's what it is. It's, uh, baggy shorts and a t-shirt, it's the long tennis shoes or something like that. I think that's right.
Yes, sir. I think it's the first time we're doing anything but a backpack day.
So is the, is the parade day, is that like something, is that not cool anymore, or is it just the same?
I think we tried to ask about it, and then we realized there's a lot of planning, and we started late. And then we were like, well, we can do like a hallway, hallway walk-around, but then it just, we never got into it.
And when you say wait, you're talking about like the student count, student count.
Yes, sir. So I think basically it was, if we wanna do it, we're gonna have to start planning like now for next year.
I would imagine so, to, to get a parade where we would have to, uh, dispute permits and all those things for the city, I would imagine.
Normally do it around the track.
Normally. That's what we did, back historically, we would, we'd invite all the schools and go around the track.
Okay. All right, I was thinking, if they shut town down, good parade.
I don't know.
I'm staying like t-shirt.
I mean, everything's going on state and government, so I'm missing the whole kind of thing.
That's cool. Well, hi, when are you there? This should be an exciting week, and Friday night should be exciting as well. Mr. Brown, anything to report from the city? I would be glad to have Mr. Owens with us tonight also.
No, everything's going, going pretty good.
Good, good. Appreciate all y'all do for us.
Yeah, I will say that because y'all got an interest in this, um, it's cool with us. Down at Anderson Park, the wiring is going on, the electrical part's going down right now. So that's coming together. It's looking, you know, all that electrical probably they have down there should be resolved. Shouldn't have those lights burning for so long. The William D. Jones project, we've been working on five years. But they talked about fourteen years. But actually working on five years, really trying to get it done. They went to bid, we got a bid on it. State has to approve that bid because most of the funds was stayed, it's been hung up in the state about six weeks. So we don't want to approve that.
We understand projects being hung up by the state, don't we?
That's where we at.
Well, we appreciate y'all's dedication to that. That, every time I drive that, that little hill, I think, of your bus, school bus, and how dangerous that's.
If you brought it up, I believe my first, second board meeting here, the third maybe, not, it hadn't been too long, you brought that up.
That's right, that's right.
You like, let's take a look at it. And we've looked and looked and worked and worked, we're gonna miss to get it done.
That's right, well, we, you've been the, you've been the glue that's held attention on that project.
It's generated challenge, the last five years has been a huge challenge, it's one roadblock after another, it's just.
We really appreciate your, um.
And all of us with the state.
Appreciate your leadership.
We get that.
Anything else, board members, anything from television line?
Just as a clarification, we are to have a walk-around at the game, just not, we were gonna do a pep rally, like, go to the square.
Oh, gotcha, 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 okay, so you were.
We're the one at the game, we're trying to do anything, but I never went through.
Gotcha, okay, so the traditional tiger, uh, hurrah around the track.
I was gonna say, that was you said, I heard that that's what they had talked about, and so I've been kinda waiting about one that came through.
Well, in that case, student councils have run into that problem multiple times over the years, 'cause it's like, you know, about a month ahead of times, you don't have time to get permits and things like that.
Good.
Well, we can pass that down to your next, if y'all know pep rally.
Lessons learned from the next.
Camarades.
You got it.
When county high school is primitive year, on Friday.
Right, right. And I will say, the very first year, the very first year we had high school, uh, the county mayor was Ms. Peggy Bells, and she reached out to us to say, if y'all, if Fayette High School wants to use the courthouse grandstand, it's available for you, and so they, they had a warm welcome over there for any time we wanted to use it. We just haven't yet, so hopefully, hopefully, if we decide to in the future, they'll, uh, continue to have a welcome.
Grandstand will always be open. We'll help us.
He pays the local taxes. That's right. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you very much, we stand firm, great meeting.